Read Isaiah fourteen verses eleven through fifteen and the question was, who is Isaiah referring to in these passages? And here is the passage, once again, I'll just go ahead and read it for us real quick. Let's say you weren't here. It says, "Your pomp and the music of your harps have been brought down to shield. Maggots are spread out as your bed beneath you and worms are your covering. How you have fallen from the heavens, O star of the morning, sun of the dawn. You've been cut down to earth, you who have weakened the nations. But you have said in your heart, I will ascend to heaven, I will raise my throne above the stars of God. I will sit on the mount of assembly in the far, in the far reaches of the north. I will stand above the heights of the clouds. I will make myself like the most high, nevertheless, you will be thrust down the shield to the recesses of the pit." Last week, we talked about how, we talked about the rebellions and how there were a bunch of rebellions. We talked a lot about the Tower of Babel and how we see a human side of it, how we saw a bunch of people got together, they wanted to build the Tower of Babel to rival God. They wanted to make a new Eden, all of that. Well, we also investigated how when Moses was looking back in Deuteronomy, chapter four and verse thirty-two, how he was seeing a spiritual side of it, how he was seeing how the Tower of Babel represented some rebels, some spiritual rebels, some spiritual Elohim who were rebelling against God. So not only with Moses referring back to this, but we can also look back to some of the prophets in the Old Testament, looking back to the Tower of Babel, to Genesis eleven. And when they look back, they see more to Genesis eleven than just a human rebellion. They compare this rebellion of human empires to a more ancient spiritual rebellion linked with rebel spiritual beings. So in Isaiah thirteen, chapters thirteen and fourteen, these chapters are, contain oracle, oracles against Babylon. So kind of echoing what Joanne was saying, that transcend the horizon of Isaiah's own day. So when, so Babylon was greatly reduced in their size and their influence. They weren't the big bad as they used to be. That's because Isaiah is looking at the bigger Babylon of biblical imagery, which is an image for any and all violent nations that don't acknowledge Yahweh. So Babylon is kind of like the archetype, you know, for those who are going against God. A lot of people compare, oh, you're being like Babylon, stuff like that. So in Isaiah fourteen, verses eleven through fifteen, when Isaiah addresses the king of this Babylon, he's using poetry, specifically cosmic poetry, to describe the king of Babylon's arrogance and his presumption in these verses. Now, when we look at this, when we observe, we see that behind the earthly empire Babylon, Isaiah is discerning a darker and more mysterious spiritual rebel that animates the earthly kingdom. So not only is it referencing a physical king, you know, the king of Babylon, but it's also referring to a spiritual rebel. Remember in these past studies, we talked about how oftentimes you have the human side and then you have the spiritual side and a lot of times biblical authors like to look at both sides. So for example, Joanne is right, yes, it is the king of Babylon, or some scholars say the king of Tyre. But just, just like Eloise said, it can also refer to another spiritual rebel, Lucifer. So this mysterious spiritual rebel that animates this earthly kingdom that's over it. And this spiritual rebel wanted to ascend to God's status, to Yahweh's status and authority, instead of living under it. Remember when God created everything and he created other Elohim, they were to serve under him. You know, he would give them roles and they would serve under him. And by serving him, they would point to the ultimate Elohim to our God, you know, they were signposts to him, they were pointing to him. So when we look at this poetry in these verses right here, because this is poetry, okay? This is not narrative. This is not like a, you know, you're reading a novel, it's not discourse, this is poetry. When we read this, we can see how there's a creature, a description of a creature attempting to ascend to the heavens and usurp God's authority, to sit on the mount of assembly. And this map, this precise, this maps precisely onto the story of the Tower of Babylon, that was made to have its head in the heavens, which is from Genesis eleven, four. So this poem is portraying the spiritual realm of the human focused story in Genesis eleven. It's about one of the sons of God who rebels, tries to usurp God's authority, and as a result is cast down by God. While this sounds a lot like Genesis three, you know, with the fall, notice that the story is clearly recalling the Tower of Babylon. So God will respond and we see him responding in Psalm twenty-eight. Okay, and I'll read this and we have, notice we got the, I got some of the text, it's bold and it's underlined. So in Psalm twenty, excuse me, Psalm eighty-two, we hear, "God takes his stand in the divine council. In the midst of Elohim, he renders justice, judgment. How long will you judge unjustly and show partiality to the wicked? Vindicate the weak in the fathers, do justice to the afflicted and destitute. Rescue the weak and the needy, deliver them out of the hand of the wicked. They do not know, nor do they understand, they walk about in darkness, all the foundations of the earth are shaken. I said, you are Elohim and all of you are sons of the Most High. Nevertheless, you will die like humans and fall like one of the princes. Arise, O God, judge the earth, for it is you who possesses all the nations." So in this Psalm, we see a response of what God is going to do. And he is, in this Psalm, it is addressing the spiritual rebels whose story is told in Genesis three, you know, the fall, Adam and Eve, and Genesis six with the Nephilim, and in Genesis eleven with the Tower of Babel. Now, for a moment, let's simply notice that this scene at Psalm twenty-eight depicts God confronting the rebel Elohim who are responsible for injustice towards the poor and vulnerable. This is a classic prophetic accusation. So what that means is in books like Isaiah, Jeremiah, Ezekiel, this is a pattern where it accuses those, it's like in court, right? How do the guilty stand, you know, we, we stand, they stand guilty or, you know, something like that. Think of it like a courtroom almost, okay? So here in this, in this prophetic text, which is from Psalm eighty-two, we have a prophetic accusation that the worship of idol gods leads to injustice, because these Elohim, these other, technically you can call them gods, don't demand justice or holiness from their worshippers. Remember last week, we talked about how they're in Deuteronomy thirty-two and in Deuteronomy four, how there's this idea that when the humans fell and when the spiritual rebels rebelled, that God cast not only the humans out of Eden, but he also cast the spiritual rebels out of, you know, his, out of the heavens, and that he appointed these rebel Elohim other, over the other nations, for them to rule over them. So when we talked about that, now these other Elohim who are ruling over other nations like Egypt or Babylon or Syria or what have you, they're not being like Yahweh, right? Who, Yahweh had, who, who was his portion? His portion was Israel. And then through Israel, what we read in Abraham, right? What was the covenant, right? Through you, your descendants will be numerous, but through you, all the other nations will be blessed. So from Israel, all the other nations will be blessed. And God would take back everyone from all these other Elohim and make them his. And we see that through Jesus, we see the restoration, new creation, newer heavens, new earth, all that. But until then, these other Elohim who are over all these other nations, they're not doing what's right. They're causing war and injustice and all these things. So this poem right here in Psalm eighty-two, it has Yahweh confronting the rebels, confronting the rebel spiritual beings and assigning them what? What was their punishment? "You will die like humans," which is a callback to Genesis six, three, where God assigns the sons of God to immortal fate, that's with the Nephilim. But also does he say in Psalm eighty-two, "And you will fall like one of the princes." Now, this is a hyperlink to Genesis three, verses fourteen through fifteen. The humiliation and the exile of the snake to what? When God cursed the snake, what did he say? He said, "You will eat dust and you will die." You know, there will be enemy between you and man, but still, he assigns him death eventually. Now, when we go verse eight, "Arise, O God, judge the earth, for it is you who possesses all the nations." This is a resolution to Genesis eleven. The scattering of Babylon is when God handed over the nations to worship other Elohim. But in Psalm eighty-two, we learn that these Elohim led the nations into injustice and death. Like think about Egypt, right? They, they were worshiping all these other gods, right? And what did some of these gods demand? Well, they led them to what? Kill all the newborns, right? All the Israelites newborns to commit injustices, to oppress people through slavery, all these bad things. We have a resolution in Psalm eighty-two, and the resolution is this. God is going to do for all the nations what he did for Israel, and what's that? He's going to rescue them from slavery to human and earthly rebels, and he's going to possess them. He's going to bring them all back to himself and he'll do that through whom? Through Jesus. Next thing we have, the prophetic hope is the downfall of human and spiritual rebels. There are numerous texts in the Old Testament prophets, Isaiah, Ezekiel, Jeremiah, texts like that, that view the conflict among the empires, among the empires in their time, right? Think like Babylon, Syria, Egypt, all those nations around Israel, right? These Old Testament prophets, they only see the human realm, but they see the human realm mirroring a conflict among their heavenly counterparts. So we see this in Daniel ten, and this is Daniel speaking, okay? "I lifted my eyes and behold, there was a certain man dressed in linen, whose waist was girted with a belt pure gold of upvaz. His body was also like barrel, his face had the appearance of lightning. His eyes were like flaming torches, his arms and feet were like the gleam of polished bronze, and the sound of his words like the sound of a tumult. He said to me, 'O Daniel, man of highest esteem, understand the words I am about to tell you and stand upright, for I have now been sent to you.' And when he had spoken this word to me, I stood up trembling. Then he said to me, 'Do not be afraid, Daniel, for from the first day that you set your heart on understanding this and on humbling yourself before your God, your words were heard, and I have come in response to your words. But the prince of the kingdom of Persia was withstanding me for twenty-one days. Then behold, Michael, one of the chief princes, came to help me, for I had been left there with the kings of Persia. Then he said, 'Do you understand why I came to you? But I shall, I shall now return to fight against the prince of Persia. So I am going forth and behold, the prince of Greece is about to come. However, I will tell you what is inscribed in the writing of truth, yet there is no one who stands firmly with me against these forces except Michael, your prince.'" But notice how this, this messenger, this angel is talking to Daniel, but he's also talking about these other opponents who delayed him or other allies he has who are going to help him out. So these are spiritual beings who are fighting against each other, right? I mean, they're, so you have angels under God who are fighting against the spiritual rebels, all trying to rescue Daniel. The message given to Daniel reveals the biblical heaven and earth worldview, where the empires of our world are each given over to an authority of a spiritual rebel who could be called the prince of that nation. So when we go back, "But the prince of the kingdom of Persia," this is an Elohim who's over Persia, "was withstanding me for twenty-one days." Michael, one of the chief priests, this is a Elohim under God. "For I had been left there with the kings of Persia," with other, other spiritual rebel Elohim, right there. So I'm going forth against the prince of Persia, and behold, the prince of Greece, here's another Elohim who's another rebel going against him. However, I tell you that, and then, and then we have Michael again, who's under God. So we see how God is at work by sending angels, who are technically considered Elohim, you know, they're subclass, but he's sending messengers to do battle and to what? To redeem and rescue his people from among these nations. So the earthly conflict is a mirror of the heavenly conflict as well. Now, in Daniel, in Daniel ten, the empire of Babylon is in ruins at this point. But who's ruling right now? Persia and Greece, and who are over them? Rebel Elohim. Okay, who are ruling in the present and the near future. So in the larger scope of the entire book of Daniel, chapter seven depicts these empires and their earthly heavenly representatives as mutant beasts that will be toppled when God's kingdom is established forever. So in a nutshell, what that means is they're, they're spiritual Elohim, you know, who rebelled against God. But in Daniel seven, they're seen as these beasts, but what they're really talking about is spiritual rebels who are going against God, but what will happen at the end of the day? God will defeat them and his kingdom will be established forever. It sounds kind of familiar, right, to the New Testament, right? And like Revelation, stuff like that, it's all interconnected, all scriptures interconnected. It's amazing what you can see our God doing. So let's look at Isaiah twenty-four, verses twenty-one through twenty-three. "So it will happen in that day that the Lord will punish the host of heaven on high and the kings of the earth on earth. They will be gathered together like prisoners in the dungeon and will be confined in prison. After many days, they will be punished. Then the moon will be abashed and the sun ashamed, for the Lord of hosts will reign on Mount Zion and in Jerusalem, and his glory will be before his elders." God will punish the host of the heaven on high, the spiritual rebels. God will punish the kings of the earth on the earth, the humans, right? Those who have gone against him. What will happen to everyone? They will be gathered together like prisoners in the dungeon, they will be confined in prison, and after many days, they will be punished. And the moon will be abashed and the sun ashamed, that the Lord of hosts will reign. So this poem is a depiction of the culmination of history. It's like a giant summary of what will happen. This is depicting the day of Yahweh, okay? And this is, the day of Yahweh is, we can think of it as judgment day, okay? It's like another name for it. But notice what God does. Notice that God's justice will confront both the earthly and heavenly rebels. And that these spiritual powers are called the hosts of heaven, these are the spiritual rebels. But also notice in twenty-four, verse twenty-three, we see the sun and the moon being ashamed in comparison to the light and glory of Yahweh that will pervade the new creation. Now, in the sessions, sessions one and two, we talked about how biblical authors, when they would see the stars, you know, the sun, the moon and the stars, how some of the biblical authors saw that these were Elohim appointed to, to rule on behalf of God. So here, the sun and the moon being ashamed or bashed, this is once again referring to the spiritual rebels, they're not doing the jobs that they were appointed to. They have rebelled against God. So the conclusion to the Hebrew scriptures, to the Old Testament, is a depiction of the rebels from among the divine council. So when all the texts that we just looked at, those from Isaiah, those from Daniel, when we look at all these in conjunction with each other, we see a picture of spiritual evil that resembles what we find in the New Testament as well. Now, the biblical authors, they're aware of the powers of evil that work on the corporate levels of human societies and nations, an idolatry that distorts humans and ruins social institutions when they don't acknowledge the one true God, Yahweh. Now, notice how frequent the images of power, the skies and the royal rule are used. We see princes and kingdoms in Daniel ten. We see the host of heavens mentioned in Deuteronomy four, Isaiah fourteen and twenty-four. We see the rulers of the sky mentioned in Genesis one. Human kingdoms are portrayed as enslaved to the worship of these powers. They're appointed, remember, when they were scattered from Babylon. God also scattered all the rebel Elohim over the earth as well, over these other nations. And since these human nations are worshiping other Elohim besides Yahweh, what happens? We have disaster, we have ruin, they're not worshiping the one true God, and as a result, they have gone astray. But when God's kingdom comes in power, these powers will need to be confronted and they will need to be defro, dethroned. And this is precisely the mission Jesus saw himself fulfilling. Look at Jesus's testing in the wilderness. You see, after Jesus was baptized, he immediately went into the wilderness and was tested by the ultimate spiritual rebel, whose authority was over all the kingdoms of the world. And we know who this is. This is a good Sunday school answer, you know, good old Hostan, Satan, the devil, Lucifer, the enemy. We can give some more names, anyway. Here, Matthew, chapter four, verses eight through eleven. Again, "The slanderer, the devil, took Jesus to a very high mountain, high mountain, and he showed him all the kingdoms of the world and their glory. And he said to them, 'All these things I will give to you if you fall down and worship me.' Then Jesus said to him, 'Go away, Satan, for it is written, you shall worship the Lord your God and serve him only.' Then the slanderer left him, and behold, angels came and began to serve him." So Jesus is confronting the spiritual powers, the rebel Elohim who are ruling over this world. It's not just Jesus going against the human authorities. He's going against the spiritual authorities who truly rule this world. So after Jesus's initial resistance against the spiritual power at work behind the corruption of human kingdoms, Jesus launches his announcement of God's kingdom. And it all led up to his conflict with these same human and spiritual powers in Jerusalem. Look at Luke twenty-two, verses fifty-two through fifty-three. "Then Jesus said to the chief priests and the officers of the temple and the elders, who had come out against him, 'Have you come out with swords and clubs as you would against a robber?' This is when Jesus is getting arrested, okay? 'While I was with you daily in the temple, you did not lay hands on me. While we were at church, you didn't lay hands on me,' that's what Jesus is saying. 'But this hour belongs to you and to the power of darkness.'" So notice that Jesus sees, he sees the Jerusalem temple establishment coming to arrest him. He sees the human side, but he also sees the spiritual side, the spiritual dimension of evil at work through these human authorities, because these human authorities are not serving God, they're serving other spiritual beings, other rebels who are not with God. And he calls them what? The power of darkness, this is your hour, but they just have, of course, he's being metaphorical, of course, not just a literal, I mean, this is y'all's time, y'all just have a little bit. But this is the same view that we encounter in Deuteronomy thirty-two, and Isaiah thirteen through fourteen and twenty-four and Daniel ten. Corrupt human kingdoms have been hijacked as expressions of cosmic spiritual evil. Now, if that sentence sounds weird, what it is, is the spiritual rebels who rebelled against God are controlling humans, some of the kingdoms. Now, this doesn't mean that, let's say, these chief priests and these elders who were influenced by these spiritual beings, it doesn't mean they don't have, they're, they're still responsible for their actions too, okay? They can't say, "Well, the, the devil made me do it," you know, they, they still were influenced and led to do these things, but they still have responsibility. But we can see from scripture how there is a spiritual side that we might not see, how it might be behind the scenes, trying to lead us astray from our God, to destroy us. And we see that a lot in our world with poverty, with injustice, with racism, with murders and killings and, and slay, I mean, all the evils. So Jesus's death, as orchestrated by human and spiritual powers, the later apostles view Jesus's crucifixion as primarily the result of spiritual evil powers that had enslaved humans through the idolatry of power. "We do," and this is Paul talking about how we Christians, however, speak a message of wisdom among the mature, but not the wisdom of this age or the rulers of this age who are coming to nothing. No, we declare God's wisdom, we declare God's word, a mystery that has been hidden and that God destined for our glory before time began. None of the rulers this age understood it, for if they had, they would not have crucified the Lord of glory." So in this passage, Paul is alluding to not only the spiritual side, but also the human powers who are together in their guilt and the accountability of the death of Jesus. It is precisely human institutions that worship the idols of religious tradition and the national security, which is the temple establishment and the Roman government, that crucified Jesus. So in a nutshell, humans and spiritual rebels crucified God together, okay? But ultimately, but ultimately, the fault lays in the rulers of this age. And who are the rulers of this age? Fallen Elohim, spiritual rebels against God, to whom the human rulers give their allegiance. So the apostles described Jesus's death as a victory over these powers. And we see this in, in Paul's works, we see this in scripture in Colossians two, verse fifteen. And this is Paul speaking once again. "And having disarmed the powers and authorities, he made a public spectacle of them, triumphing over them by the cross." So the crucifixion of Jesus was actually his victory over the, both the human and the spiritual power structures who killed him. Jesus didn't exert his power based on the idolatrous value systems, enslaved our earthly power structures. He didn't go against the temple establishment, because it would have been useless, right? He's not dealing with the root of the problem. Rather, he allowed the rebellious powers, the spiritual powers to kill him, using the humans, so that he could expose their ultimate weakness and the powerlessness in comparison to the life creating power of the Creator. In a nutshell, God has a throwdown with the rebels and spoiler alert, he wins. Because through Jesus, through his son, by the power of the Holy Spirit, he raises him from the dead. And he shows them that they have no power. And then who will judge at the end of time? Jesus, and what will he do with the rebels? What do we hear? In Isaiah fourteen, they will be, not Isaiah fourteen, what do we hear in Isaiah twenty-four? "They will be gathered together like prisoners in the dungeon and will be confined in prison." What does that sound like in New Testament and in Revelation? They'll be cast into, hell, into a prison, into a place where God is absent. They will be punished. So Jesus's resurrection is vic, is, Jesus's resurrection as victory over these powers. God's love and power to generate life out of death is a real power, which was demonstrated when Jesus was raised from the dead. In Matthew twenty-eight, the Great Commission, what does Jesus say before he ascends into heaven? What does Jesus say before he ascends into heaven? All authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Therefore, go and make disciples of all nations. Notice the connection. The risen Jesus has authority. The enemy of this world no longer has power because Jesus died and he resurrected from the grave. So this is precisely the rule. That humanity was destined for according to Genesis one and Psalm eight. But now that Jesus has been exalted to the place of divine rule. He rules what? His father's kingdom. His authority over the spiritual and human powers is shown by doing what? By going to all the nations and telling them the good news. Bringing them all back to God. Rescuing those who are under the plight of spiritual rebels. Of those who can only see in darkness, of those who can't hear. We see this spiritual dimension, how Jesus is addressing the spiritual dimension of the spiritual rebels. Who are ruling over the human institutions and nations. And he's going to go and free and he tells his disciples that they have authority to proclaim everything in his name because. What does it say at the end of Matthew? And remember, I will be with you always. Even until the end of the age, until he comes back and final victory. So Jesus saying, y'all, y'all have authority? Go out, bring everyone. To me and then through me, there'll be a new heaven and a new earth. Where there'll be no more pain, no more troubles. Where you will be my people and I will be your God. Remember in the tower of Babylon, Genesis eleven and Deuteronomy thirty-two, God handed the nations over to the rebellious spiritual powers. But in Matthew twenty-eight, Jesus announcing that he is the one who will repossess the nations that become a part of what? God's kingdom. The resurrection and exaltation of Jesus is the ultimate reversal of Genesis eleven. They were scattered, but now Jesus is bringing everyone back to him to be his people and they will be. And he will be their God. So look at Ephesians, this is Paul speaking. That power is the same as the mighty strength he exerted. When he raised Christ from the dead and seated him at the right hand in the heavenly realms. Far above all rule and authority, power and dominion and every name that is invoked, not only in the present age. And the one to come. So in the mind of the apostle Paul, the ultimate opposition that the followers of Jesus face. Is the spiritual powers and authorities. We see this in Ephesians six. Finally, be strong in the Lord and your mighty power. Put on the full armor of God so that you can take your stand against the schemes of the slanderer. Who's the slanderer? The devil. And this is what Paul says, for our struggle is not against flesh and blood. That is not against humans. But against the rulers, against the authorities, against the powers of this dark world and against the spiritual forces of evil in heavenly realms. Paul's talking about the spiritual rebels. Therefore, put on the full armor of God. And he continues on explaining to put on the full armor of God. So that when the day of evil comes, you can stand firm. When the spiritual authorities attack you, you can stand firm. With everything that God has given you. So Paul imagines, once again, this is in summary. The real enemy that faces Jesus's people. He speaks of the same rebels of the divine council portrayed in the Old Testament. The idolatrous powers that animate the kingdoms of this world. Are the real culprit. Not the humans who are enslaved to their ideologies and values. This is why the type of resistance that Paul advocates for. Is a subversion of normal warfare. He commends the nonviolent resistance that imitates the character traits of the messianic king from Isaiah of Jesus. The divine armor listed here. Is adapted from all texts, various texts in Isaiah, describe the rule of the Messiah. So Paul's saying, you want to stand firm? Be like Christ, be like the Messiah. Have that belt of truth around you. Have that righteousness, the breast praise of righteousness. Have your feet fitted with the gospel of peace. Take up the shield of faith. Take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the spirit, which is the word of God. So Paul describes the transition of our world. Into a new creation. With language that describes the feat of the cosmic powers that have enslaved our world to violence and death. So this is the defeat of the powers when God's kingdom comes. We see this in first Corinthians. For as in Adam all die, so in Christ all will be made alive. But each and churn, Christ, the first fruits, then when he comes, those who belong to him, the last enemy to be destroyed is death. For he has put everything under his feet. Then the end will come when he hands over the kingdom. To God the Father, after he has destroyed all dominion, authority and power. For he must reign until he has put all his enemies under his feet. So Paul envisions the day. When the new creation comes under the direct rule of its creator. And a new humanity he is appointed to reign over it. Namely, Christ and his people. This means that the rebels of the divine council, the powers and authorities must be dethroned. And removed in order to open the way for a new future in a recreated. Heaven and earth. Yeah, and let me, let me just reemphasize that. Even though there might be. Powers that are influencing people. People are still responsible for what they do. Okay, this isn't just like, like if I was being influenced by a rebel Elohim, right? Let's say an evil spirit. Yeah, they might influence me. But I still am responsible for what I do. You know, like let's say he wanted me to go and commit some horrible atrocity. I am still responsible. I can't just say, well, you know, the devil made me do it. Well, yes, he did tempt you, but you still are responsible. You know, so I just want to let people know that there was. Are y'all familiar with Saint Augustine? Augustine, he's a prolific. He's regarded as an early church father. And before he became a Christian, he belonged to a cult called, uh, under Manny. And this, this philosophy was called Manichaeism. Okay, and in that belief system, people would say, well. The evil forces made me do it, so it's not my fault. Like, I'm not held responsible because they made me do it. Like that's how they would see, they would see the body as being corrupt and evil. And let's say they went and committed to crime. Well, I didn't do it, the evil spirit did it. And that's not what we're talking about at all. Draw what you think angels and cherubim look like. And spoiler, they don't look like what you think they do. I want to thank y'all for joining us in our Bible study. And I guess we'll see y'all later.